Everybody here, with the exception of Graham, and I'm sure he'll be here in just a minute.
I don't think Judy's on yet either.
Yeah, Judy's not gonna be with us tonight.
Okay.
Hello.
Graham.
Graham, hi, how are you? Okay, now that we're all here, I would like to call this business meeting of the Albemarle County School Board for July 16th to order, and we will start with a moment of silence. Okay, before we get on to our first order of business, just a couple of things. One, I'd like to do a microphone check, and I don't know how everybody else's screen looks, but if, Jennifer, you're in my top left-hand corner, would you start? And we'll go across to the board and then, and then down the road.
Okay, I'm Jennifer Johnston, clerk for the school board.
John Alcarro at large. School Board Attorney.
I think it's random.
Okay, Dr. Acuff.
Kate Acuff, Jack Jewett District.
Ms. Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Mr. Oberg.
Dave Oberg, Whitehall District.
Ms. Schmidt. Ms. Schmidt.
How did find the button? Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer.
Thank you. Ms. Pitsenberger. Thank you. Mr. Page.
Graham Page, Millau District.
Dr. Haas.
Hi, good evening, this is Matt Haas, Superintendent.
Mrs. Carlson.
Katrina Carlson, Ryod District.
Dr. Kaiser.
Eric Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Ms. Collins.
Good evening, Debbie Collins, Deputy Superintendent.
Mr. Foley.
Jim Foley, Director of Transportation.
Thank you. Dr. Hairston.
Good evening, Bernard Hairston, Assistant Superintendent.
Ms. Johnson. As in Ashby.
Hey, that's me. Hi, good evening, Ashby Johnson, Principal Jack Jewett Middle School.
Thank you. Ms. Duval.
Renee Duval, Routing and Planning, Transportation.
Thank you. Mr. Asher.
Well, I'm Jim Asher, the principal at Burley Middle School.
Thank you. Ms. Wood.
Hi, Megan Wood, Principal of Southern Middle School.
Thank you. Mr. Curst.
Kevin Curst, Executive Director of Special Education and Student Services.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas.
Good evening, everyone. Jay Thomas, Director of Secondary Education.
Thank you. Dr. Diggs.
Hi, Christine Diggs, Chief Technology Officer.
Thank you. And there is one screen that's showing Albemarle County Public Schools, but doesn't have a name associated with it. Whoever that mystery person is, if you'd like to share with us who you are, that'd be great. And if not, that's okay, too. Okie doke. Couple of things. One is, I just want to remind everybody that in terms of any votes that we take this evening, that's going to be a, on a roll call basis. And as I had said earlier, I think before we got started, that Ms. Lee is not going to be joining us tonight as she is a bit ill. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agenda. Have a second? All in favor? Oh, Ms. Johnson, forgot, within a minute.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes. The motion passes. Before we go on to the consent agenda, I just want to do a couple of quick thank yous. The first one of which is to the Board of Supervisors. I just want to take a moment on behalf of the school board to thank the Board of Supervisors, which last night passed a non-emergency ordinance pursuant to Virginia Code 15.2-1413 that provides, notwithstanding any contrary provision of law, either general or special, any locality may, by ordinance, provide a method to assure continuity in its government in the event of an enemy attack or other disaster. Such ordinance shall be limited in its effect to a period not exceeding six months after any such attack or after a disaster has been averted, and shall provide for a method for the resumption of normal governmental authority by the end of the six-month period. Among other things, the ordinance supersedes the Freedom of Information Act's requirements for quorums of public bodies to be physically assembled and the restrictions on participating electronically during the COVID-19 disaster. Because its scope specifically extends to the school board, it allows the school board to meet virtually and continue with its essential folk functions without confining the subject matter of its meetings to just the emergency itself. This is what I had announced in our first Zoom meeting that we anticipated coming in the middle part of this month. It happened as of last night, and I think all of us are genuinely appreciative of what the Board of Supervisors did. I also want to thank Mr. Holden for working with Mr. Campner, who's the attorney for the Board of Supervisors on this issue, and for guiding us through the virtual meeting process as a whole. So, thank you, Mr. Holden. Our next order of business is approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All, Ms. Johnston?
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes. Okay, the motion passes. Next up, and I'm going to ask the board to now mute your microphones if you're not speaking, and, and then to turn them on when you, we do want to speak. Our next subject is public comment. And another thank you is, is in order here, because I want to thank Mr. Holden, Dr. Diggs, and Ms. Johnston for taking the bull by the horns and making public comment work in time for our target date of tonight's meeting. I think it's still going to be a work in progress for a couple of meetings, but I want to thank the three of you especially for making this happen. Thank you very much. Do we have any, anybody signed up for public comment, Jennifer?
No.
Okay. Mr. Page, would you like to read the guidance for the record and for, just to get it out so that everybody's heard the new revisions?
Right. I'll read mainly the, the changes that'll be enforced while we are doing virtual meetings. As authorized by ordinance of the county of Albemarle, the school board will hold its meetings electronically during the COVID-19 pandemic. The school board is nevertheless committed to encouraging public comment despite its need to meet on a virtual basis. And because of that change, we have two main changes or two main ways of having people communicate with us. First, written comments may be submitted to the school board clerk prior to the start of the meeting, and will be disseminated to all of the school board members for review. Secondly, members of the public wishing to provide public comment during the school board meeting may sign up online at our website by 4:00 PM the day before the meeting. The clerk will email Zoom links to the speakers on the day of the meeting so that they can log into the meeting to provide comment. Before electronic public comment commences, the vice chair will announce the order in which the speakers will comment. Public commenters will, will initially be admitted to a waiting room on Zoom until it's their turn to speak. They will be able to hear the meeting in progress while they wait. Each speaker's access to the public comment will be activated when it is that speaker's turn to provide comment to the members of the school board. Speakers will be notified when they reach the two-minute mark, and at the three-minute mark, the speaker's Zoom link will be automatically deactivated. Although the school board is confident that public comment will proceed in an orderly and respectful manner, upon instructions from the chair, the clerk may deactivate the speaker's mic at any time. Speakers during the meeting or those submitting written comments should state name and address or magisterial district. Simply stating Albemarle County for your address is not adequate. Although the school board will not respond to comments made during the public comment period, school board members may address comments at the end of the meeting agenda under other business. So those are the primary changes that we'll be having while we are having virtual meetings.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Page. Next up is Spotlight on Education. Ms. Osborne.
Yes, thank you. So we have a resolution. I'm going to read it now. It's in regard to the Child Nutrition Services. Whereas on Friday, March 13th, Virginia Governor Ralph Northam ordered the closing of all schools in the Commonwealth for a period of two weeks to protect against the spread of the coronavirus. And whereas this action to protect public health through the closure of schools meant that students who participated in the federal government's free and reduced lunch program lost their access to the nutritious meals provided each day at school. And whereas in Albemarle County Public Schools, thousands of students were negatively impacted by this loss of access. And whereas among the school division's four values is its young people, specifically their academic and personal development, their health and well-being. And whereas in response to the closure of schools, the division's Child Nutrition Department immediately began to plan to meet the needs of all children for healthy breakfast and lunches on a daily basis. And whereas, within one business day of the governor's closure announcement, Child Nutrition Team members, under the guidance of Director Christina Pitsenberger, had organized a food distribution program. And whereas, the program began with six school sites throughout the county, serving more than 1,000 meals a day to students and their siblings 18 years of old and younger. And whereas, on March 23rd, the governor extended the closure of all K-12 schools in the Commonwealth through the end of the current academic year. And whereas, the Child Nutrition Office continued to monitor the need among its students and all communities across the county for healthy meals, and to work with the Department of Transportation in setting up additional food distribution sites. And whereas, as the result of this ongoing planning and teamwork, the office now distributes breakfast and lunches to students 21 locations at schools and communities. And whereas, since March 17th, the Child Nutrition Office has provided more than 30,000 meals to students from all schools and locations in the county, and is continuing to evaluate the needs to further expand this service. Now therefore be it resolved that the Albemarle County School Board expresses its deep appreciation to Ms. Pitsenberger and her highly dedicated and skilled team for their invaluable support in meeting the nutritional and health needs of thousands of Albemarle County Public School students and their siblings, and for doing so through such an expeditious and increasingly inclusive plan. And be it further resolved, the school board also salutes the contributions of the Transportation Department, its director James Foley, and his team for enabling the food distribution program to bring its services directly to the neighborhoods where students reside, thereby expanding participation in this vitally beneficial program. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. And Ms. Pitsenberger, Mr. Foley, Ms. Duval, I know you're all with us. Would love to see you, and we thank you as, as the resolution says, and we appreciate everything you're doing. You have our deepest respect. Thank you all.
Thank you. I appreciate the recognition. Resolution's very appreciated, and it's an honor on behalf of the fabulous team to accept that. And a special thanks to the transportation team, who really has been working alongside with us to help really extend that service out to the sites beyond the six feeding sites that we have. Rosalyn Schmidt and Jennifer Butler-Phillip have been real instrumental in getting the media releases out, building services, and getting supplies for us that we need, the face masks and such. It's just, at no surprise, the, the schools just truly worked collaboratively to really meet the needs of the students. And the real reward is when you're out and you see the real sincere gratitude from those that are receiving the service. We have actually served over 1,300 per day twice this week, so it continues to grow.
Thank you so much. Mr. Foley?
Chairman Alcarro and the rest of the school board, I want to thank you for this recognition. It's been a pleasure to work with Christina and her staff. I'd like to salute Renee Duval, who's on here, Bill Morse, who couldn't make it, and our drivers and shop staff that have made this possible. So it's a real bright light in this dark time, and I know Christina and I feel great about it. So Renee, do you want to say a couple of words?
I'm the best one, sir.
Renee's the one that routed all these buses in a very short time, so very impressive work.
Thank you to both of you and transportation, and to your entire teams, you know, in both departments. And we'll get copies of this resolution out to you within the next couple of days. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Great job.
Next up, before I turn this over to Dr. Haas for announcements, Matt, I just want to compliment you on both the videos that you have put together and put out over the last couple of weeks. You have, they're warm, caring messages that go out to not only our school community, but our entire community. Laney is a terrific camerawoman, and Louis added a little bit in the first one. And so it was, they were, they just had Matt written all over them, and they were just so well done. Thank you, Dr. Haas.
Thank you very much, John. I really appreciate it. And we're going to send out another one tomorrow. It'll be, it'll be briefer and a little more formal, because we're going to send out an introduction to our funding, our new budget survey that we're going to send out tomorrow to the whole community. I really appreciate your kind words. That means a lot to me. I don't have any announcements that are business-related. I do want to just say four things. One is, I want to really thank the school board for continuing to have your meetings, not only on a regular basis, but you've added additional meetings to work with staff on operational issues around, that was my dog Louis barking in the background, to work on operational items and just learn about what we're doing in response to the COVID-19 closures. A lot of boards around the state have suspended their meetings. They're not taking on new technology the way you have, and you've really transitioned extremely well into this. You are also, as a board, on the cutting edge in terms of having public comment now at your meetings. You would be hard-pressed to find very many school boards around Virginia during this time having public comment at their meetings. They've probably just flipped over to getting emails or finding some other way for people to, to write into the board. That says a lot about our school board as a body, that you want feedback from the public, and you'll, and you want it in person, and you want to have that personal connection. We, we need your leadership, we need your guidance, and we always need your wisdom in working our way through these times. And without having meetings with you, we would not be able to do that. Every cloud has its silver lining. The bad news is never the last news. But we need your guidance and leadership to get to that part of the conversation, and thank you. Speaking of that, speaking of good news, I just want to say that I'm super proud of all of our teachers, our administrators, our support staff for standing up a 14,000-student virtual school in very little time. It's not perfect, but we're not going to let perfect get in the way of doing good for our community, and, and that's what we're doing. We have many opportunities to continue to learn and get better at having a virtual school, but necessity is the mother of invention, and so that's where we are right now. We are inventing a virtual school, and I wouldn't want to be doing it any other place except Albemarle County with the outstanding educators and support staff that we have. I want to mention that, speaking of which, I just want to mention right before this meeting, Debbie and Claire and I sat in on a meeting with our representatives from the Albemarle Education Association, Amy Gertner, Cheryl Knight, Becca Saxon, Mary McIntyre, and Vernon Lecky, and we had a wonderful conversation with them. They asked a lot of questions about the budget. And what really came through for me was their real care for their colleagues and wanting to make sure that they're supported in the work to support children, and that their needs are being met as we try to wrestle with the realities of a drastically reduced budget going into next year. I think they've tuned in for this meeting. They told me they would, so I want to give a shout out to that team. It was a real pleasure meeting with you all this afternoon, and I really appreciate you taking up an hour to do that among all the other things you have. And finally, since he's here tonight, I saw him earlier, I want to give a shout out to Josh Walton. During our leadership team meeting this week, Rosalyn Schmidt passed off the leadership pencil to Josh. It's our peer recognition award that's passed among our 70-plus leadership team members for doing great work that reflects the values of the community. And Rosalyn said it well. She said that Josh is a high-level professional, and he's amazingly compassionate and caring. So Josh, I just want to congratulate you for that. Thanks for the opportunity for announcements, John, and that's all we have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Haas. Any announcements from the school board? Nope, going, going twice? So, next up is other business or business, superintendent business, school board business. Dr. Haas, any, any for that?
I do. Actually, I'm going to turn things over to Debbie at this time, and then I have one more after that. So go for it, Debbie.
Good evening. As Mr. Thomas, Director of Secondary Schools, is with us tonight, we wanted him to update the board on the status of high school verified credits, since we will not be using SOLs to verify those credits this spring. Mr. Thomas?
Good evening, board members. Thank you. Jay Thomas, Director of Secondary Education. Just very briefly, with the leniency from the State Department of Education, what we are doing is able to verify, in, in order for our kids to graduate high school, they need to verify certain classes. That's some SOL-tested classes. You pass the class, you pass the SOL, that verifies it, that puts you on track to graduate. In a nutshell, what's happening is the, the state has removed some of the obstacles of that because we can't test this year. And when the students pass their class, they automatically verify the class that they are in this year toward graduation and moving forward. So they made it very easy. We just wanted to let you know that. It's a one-time deal for this year because of the situation we're in. But those kids will stay on track to graduate and will not have to go back and take those tests at a later date.
Thank you, Jay.
Sure. John, I think you're saying something. It looks like that you're muted.
Yes, indeed. I was saying thank you as well.
Okay.
Dr. Haas?
Thanks, Jay. Hey, and so I also want to bring Christina Diggs on real quick, just to talk about something that happened on Monday.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. Good evening. I'm Christine Diggs, Chief Technology Officer. I wanted to share with you how the role of our technology service desk has changed over the past month. Typically, our service desk is for our employees to get help with their technology needs and questions. But as of last month, we've been sharing the service desk phone number with our families as well. We thought it would be important for them to have us, provide them with a simple, straightforward way to get assistance with the technology devices and programs that are now a big part of their home experience. As our service desk now helps both our families and our employees, they set a new record on Monday when they responded to 86 work tickets and 81 phone calls. Our three service desk engineers, Peter Small, Ian Davidson, and Michael Ganyar are doing a great job in this new paradigm. And we're finding it's been very helpful to our families. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any business from school board members? Okay, I just have a couple of items I want to make the public aware and to remind everybody on the board that we have meetings not only tonight, but for the next three Thursdays. Tonight's our April business meeting. Next Thursday is our April work session. May the 7th is our 2:00 PM COVID update meeting, along with another issue that'll be discussed this evening. And May 14th is our May business meeting. And just to follow through, that's followed by our May 28th work session, our June 5th board retreat, and then the regular board meeting, which would be, I believe, on June 11th. So it's going to be a busy, busy time coming up. Just want to make, let the, the public know what we're doing. And one other quick thing is that for the second year in a row, Albemarle County High School students won both of the grand award honors, along with 44 other science awards in the Virginia Piedmont Regional Science Fair on March 4th at JPJ. I hope that we can have some or all of these students join us when we get back to our regular meetings in Lane Auditorium. And so next up is the Special Education Advisory Committee Annual Report. And Dr. Mr. Curst, would you host that?
Yes. I'd like to do just a little bit of an intro. Again, I'm Kevin Curst, your Executive Director of Special Education and Student Services. The Special Education Advisory Committee is composed primarily of a group of parents of children with disabilities to represent the majority of schools in our school division. Their primary responsibility is to inform the superintendent and the school board on the needs of children with disabilities that are educated and served by Albemarle County Public Schools. They're also highly valued by myself and my administrative team as they are a great group of individuals to share and bounce ideas off of during the course of the year. And quite honestly, especially during the course of this year, which we shared thoughts just two nights ago. Stephanie Hicks is with us tonight. She is the Special Ed Advisory Committee Chairperson that is going to review with you the Special Ed Advisory Committee Annual Report. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Stefan.
Hi, everyone. Well, this is a new one for all of us, so bear with me here. But first of all, thank you for letting me join in. And I want to let you know how very, very much we do appreciate our special educators. We appreciate all they do on a regular basis, but even right now, they are making a difference every day as we all try to adjust to the new normal. This report was written before the virus changed our education model, so it may not feel as relevant right now, but the recommendations are going to be key when we get back into the classroom, which hopefully will be sooner rather than later, and will help us with the continuing improvement of the ACPS special education model. Our first point was that we would really like to see Albemarle County implement the Safe Schools Ambassador Program. It's already in use in 41 states and over 2,000 schools to reduce bullying in the school systems. It's research-based, it's been field-tested. The process is they recruit students in grades four through 12. They look for the social leaders, the social influencers, and they train them in how to diffuse, safely diffuse, a bullying situation. We know that students are present in the majority of bullying incidents, and this is their chance to step up and help before, often before, teachers or administrators can even get to the scene. The studies show that the Safe Schools Ambassador Program decreases bullying and all the costs of the associated related suspensions. It increases attendance, it increases academic performance, it increases the respect for diversity. It increases attendance, it increases academic performance, it increases the respect for diversity. Which goes on to our second point, diversity. The Special Education Advisory Committee members are requesting that special education be considered in the culturally responsive teaching initiative. Our students, many of them have a culture of their own. If you Google autism culture, you'll get multiple result, results on autism awareness and neurodiversity organizations. The deaf and hard of hearing have had a culture of their own recognized for decades. And even ADHD has a culture of its own. If you doubt that one, try attending their international conference and watch the attendees just come alive when they're surrounded by people who really understand them. And who know what's going on in their world. They talk about overcoming challenges and they talk about adapting to their situations, but they also really celebrate their gifts. Folks with ADHD have a lot of gifts that often get missed in the typical classroom setting. Our third priority is to include this bed community in the contemporary schooling initiative. We had a wonderful presentation on what's coming up with contemporary schooling. But it worried us a bit to know that Murray and the Community Public Charter School are moving away from the mastery learning and into a new I B program. Our students with some challenges are losing a valuable opportunity for learning there. That mastery model worked particularly well for a number of our students with some disabilities. If this bed is included in the planning, we can make sure that all our students have a place in this new venture. It's exciting, we want to be involved. Our fourth priority is additional training for teachers and staff on ADHD and on the executive function challenges that come with it. We hear this from parents, from students, from teachers, from administrators. That our schools really need more training in this. It affects all students with or without disabilities. That part of the brain that regulates executive function doesn't fully come online until about age twenty-five and sometimes later. So all of our students would benefit. Also, our students would benefit as the teachers gain a little better control of the classroom. If you're not having to stop and work with those students who ADHD behaviors are disrupting learning, you get more time for teaching. And we're talking about approximately eleven percent of the students in our school system having ADHD. So every classroom is affected. Our final priority is ensuring that families get the information they need to work with the schools to help our students. Albemarle County Public Schools is leaving the Prep Parent Resource Center and a lot of us have counted on that resource. We want to be sure that we get a parent-centered, student-focused, and most importantly, impartial source of information. I have two special education students of my own and the process was initially terrifying and a bit contentious even. Once I knew how the process worked, I understood the acronyms, I was able to develop the relationship with the teachers and the administration. The entire process changed. And I know for other parents, this process can go from frightening to uplifting when they know what's going on and how to work with the schools instead of feeling like we're working against them. As CAC members, we hear this from a lot of parents frequently. The process is scary if you're not used to it and the acronym is, acronyms are confusing. That's the end of the presentation part. I do really want to say thank you so much to Kevin Curse, to Katie Compel and the entire special education team for their exceptional support of our students and especially during this incredibly challenging time. Thank you to the school board for letting me present this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. I really appreciate you coming and, and, and being a part of this, so thank you so much. Uh, I got a lot of notes on this and, and Mr. Curse, could I just ask you one quick question? Uh, for the benefit of the board and of the public, would you, uh, explain about what the Parent Resource Center is? And why we're, we're stepping away from that and how that's going to be, that, that, that void might get filled in?
Sure, so the Parent Resource Center is, I, I mean, it's a beautiful title, right? It's a center, a, a person, uh, provides services through the center for parents in our community. This year and for years past, it has been provided by the Piedmont Regional Education Program. Deborah Anama is the, uh, the Director of the Parent Resource Center at, at Prep. Uh, because of some of, well, it's nothing short of radical changes that the Virginia Department of Education has instituted, just in terms of funding, uh, and securing funding through, uh, for the Piedmont Regional Education Program. With Albemarle County Public Schools, we had to restructure services. So we were looking as one of the, uh, one of the services to bring in-house was the Parent Resource Center. And we were going to, we are, our plan is to, uh, fill that service uh, with someone in-house for Albemarle County employee, uh, employees and for parents of children in Albemarle County Schools. Right now, we share, uh, through Prep that service with, I believe it's eight other surrounding school divisions. But we are looking to, uh, move that to Albemarle County Public Schools as a sole provider for Albemarle County families.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, does, do any other board members have questions from Ms. Hicks?
I, I, I guess I was just, I don't know if it's for Kevin or, or Stephanie. Are there any, what particular challenges are there right now for specialized students, um, during this period of distance teaching, whatever we call it?
Yeah, I, I mean, Stephanie, you, from a parent perspective, you certainly could answer that one. Why, why don't you take that?
I'm fortunate, it's a little easier in my house because my children are a little older and actually one of them is now in college upstairs, but in college. The challenges are that it's very hard to get the services in terms of speech or OT or PT. Some of those just really don't come across as effectively online, even if you've got the best person on the staff providing services. It's a tough one. And our students are really rocked by the loss of the very dependable schedule. Particularly students on the spectrum. They really count on that. They're missing their teachers, their classmates, they're missing knowing what's going to happen every day and knowing what's expected of them. And I know for us personally, our case manager has been wonderful. She's checking with us, checked with us multiple times before we even started distance learning. And she's had a Zoom conference with my daughter already. And that does help. But unfortunate helps for my children, it's not helping for all children and for all ages. And we know they're trying so hard. We love our special education teachers, case managers, they're wonderful. But some of them have admitted that, quite frankly, they're terrified. How are they going to give these wonderful services, this amazing education under this new system?
Yes, wonderfully put, Stefan. Just regular barriers, um, that we, that children with disabilities have in our public schools are exacerbated when you can't be in the same space with them to provide all that Stephanie mentioned, so, uh, it's compounded.
I would also encourage that when we do start looking at moving back into a classroom, we help prepare these students. For some of them, it may be like starting school for the very first time. These large gaps, when you think about when they come back in August after three months away, and that's three months that we anticipated and where their lives can go on as normal. We can expect to see some behavioral issues, some definitely executive function issues, getting back into the schedule, back into listening and following directions and planning to get their assignments done and working with teachers. We just need to know that that's coming so that our teachers and our staff are not surprised.
Well, can I have a question for Kevin too? Um, just to reiterate, um, when we make the changes with Prep, our students will not be affected adversely at all. All services that Prep is now providing for us will be provided in-house, correct?
Yes, so the, yes, the, to answer that, because I don't want to say any effect, it's all services are leveled, like we are not cutting services. We are not pulling away from services. Um, the issue would be, right, like value and we'll use Parent Resource Center. Is that as good as it was at the Piedmont Regional Education Program? That's different, like we will provide the service, but that, you know, the value-added pieces is what I'm looking to, to meet and enhance. But the level of service by no means is being decreased. No, we are not cutting services for children, we are moving them in-house. That's correct.
Any other questions?
Just a, a comment, I'll be brief, Jono. Um, the past several years with the Special Ed Report, it has really focused on, um, teacher education and not just the special ed teachers, uh, having a greater depth of professional development about special ed. And, and I, I, I thought it was interesting, maybe Bernard can address this too, that it also be incorporated in this, you know, uh, culturally responsive teaching initiative. You know, these are, these are all of our students and all of our teachers should have some of the skills at least that they need to deal with. Their particular learning needs. It's more of a comment.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hicks, thank you for being with us tonight. We really enjoyed it and, and look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thank you for letting me join in, have a lovely evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Curse, uh, you are up again with the, uh, Special Education Annual Plan?
I am, um, I'm presenting to you my annual plan for special education tonight for your review and consideration. Uh, it'll appear on the consent agenda, hopefully, without any issues, uh, in the future. The plan is required, why an annual plan? It is required in order for Albemarle County Schools to secure, uh, over three million dollars in federal funding that flows through the Virginia Department of Education. So sometimes you may hear when we do budget, um, oh, that's flow-through money for special ed, that's where that comes from. Uh, the annual plan, that document, and it's relatively clunky, right? It's a product of the Virginia Department of Ed, uh, although it does its job, is broken into two essential parts. The first of which really involves Albemarle County Schools, the superintendent and the school board. Assuring the state and federal government that we're going to comply with all applicable federal and state laws in doing our business. That's both hiring and of individuals, including individuals with disabilities and educating children with disabilities. That's the first part, so it's just a host, a big list of assurances that we take seriously and we comply with. The second part of the document really goes into the accountability in terms of what our plan is for spending the money that would be awarded to us in this grant. And that second part has a few subparts, three main ones I just want to point out because sometimes it raises questions for the school board. The first of which is called coordinated early intervening services. And that's required when a school division has been found to have disproportionate identification of children of minority or, uh, minority groups in special education, over-identification, particularly in Albemarle County Schools of students of the black ethnicity uh, group for, uh, various, a few, two or three categories in special ed. Therefore, we have to put fifteen percent aside of that three million plus grant to try to prevent over-identification. We do that, we've done that for a number of years by funding intervention specialists around a little over six full-time equivalents that are broken out over, uh, all of the schools in Albemarle County. The second part of the grant is what's called set aside. There's a calculation that's to be funded for kids that are unilaterally placed by their parents in private parochial or independent or even homeschool programs in Albemarle County. These children are eligible for special education. And, uh, we do this fancy calculation, it's not a whole lot of money, but we set it aside, that's where its name comes from. For their services. And that funds about, I'm looking to do two days of a special education teacher and some speech and language services for a small group of those kids. There's about thirty-eight of them. Uh, and then lastly, is the remaining little over two and a half million dollars. And that, quite honestly, goes straight into staffing, special education teachers. Uh, it is the bulk of the grant award and it is the primary support that drives our special education services in the division. And that approximately funds about thirty-two full-time special educators, depending on salary, right? How we do all the calculations, but generally speaking, that's about thirty-two full-time, uh, teachers. That's my plan that I've put in front of you to review and for any public comments. Uh, are there any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I don't know how to get my video on. Um, so for the money that we set aside for, um, because we over-identify certain subgroups. You were saying we're doing, we've done the same thing pretty much every year. Do we, have we ever thought about doing something different? What are the options? Because if it's, has it improved at all? I guess I'm just, when I hear that, I wonder if we've thought about doing something.
Yes, so it has improved, Katrina, that, that was one of the, especially early on, um, response intervention. Now it's called a multi-tiered system of supports. Uh, we saw a significant decrease in over-identification. That was quite inspiring, quite honestly, and a lot of great gains. We still continue to, and all of the schools are on board with progress monitoring. We have management systems for our support system and we're close. When I've been reviewing the last two years, particularly three years, we're talking singular students, whereas before it felt quite honestly, like overwhelming, right? Like thirty children in a group, how, how do you, you can't just go and find them not eligible, right? You can't kick kids out of special ed. So, but now we're getting to like singletons and, and I, it is incremental because that's, that's the challenge is you can't just go out there and go, you know, you child, uh, I have to knock you off the rolls because you're, you're of a minority. It doesn't work that way, it goes into practices. And we've been addressing that head-on through other means, not just RTI. Uh, as, as early as the first semester of this year, we've been working on methodology, especially with speech and language pathologists. Because one of the group were, uh, children, um, of Hispanic groups being found eligible for speech and language impairments. So we were looking at our practices of identification for speech and language impairments and brought someone in from, um, John, uh, oh, I don't want to say, because I just, I just went blank in my brain. The Teacher University, Douted New York City, brought her up to do training on dynamic assessment. Um, and the same with school psychologists, looking at best practices with identification and working with teams. So we are looking at spreading out that issue, working with particular schools as well. Uh, so yeah, it's not all eggs in one basket as much as trying to diversify where our efforts are. But it's coming close, it really is in singleton-type children. We get our reports each year from the Department of Ed. So I'm, I'm really hopeful that pretty soon we could, it's not a have-to, that we actually choose to do intervention specialists and tiered systems of approach in this school.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Curse, thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is Away for the Day and Ms. Collins.
I'll start this, uh, we have Mr. Thomas and the middle school principals with us this evening to give the school board an update on this year's practice at our middle schools regarding cellphone usage. And I think, Mr. Thomas, you'll start us.
Absolutely, uh, good evening, everyone, this is Jay Thomas, uh, Director of Secondary Education. So we're here to talk about our Way for Today present, uh, initiative that we did this year. So just quickly, a little background and research, Away for the Day is actually a national organization and I have it linked here in the Google slides that you can go to to see, but, um, why did we get this started? A couple of our principals last school year, um, knowing that this is, uh, cellphones in our schools have been an issue for a couple of years now. Tried to pilot at the end of last year in some of their classes, uh, what would it look like if, if kids were, were told you have to put your cellphone away before you, you step into our classes? Um, and they had success with that. And so this past summer, the principals and myself and Debbie got together and we, um, worked out, uh, procedures that we would do to pilot this initiative division-wide this upcoming year. So the first thing we did is actually developed out a white paper on the Y. And again, that's linked here, having some research about the benefit of putting the cellphone away and, and why we would ask folks to put the, the phone away during, um, the, the school day. Um, and we actually did a survey later, we'll share with you some of the results of those, those Ys. Developed common, uh, what we did is we developed out some common practices and protocols. So the procedures at each of our middle schools are all the same for this initiative. They developed our common language that each of the, the, the middle school principals put in their middle school handbook. So it's the same language that went out to all of our students and families. Uh, we notified all of our families through Blackboard Connect prior to the beginning of the school year that this practice was going to happen and they actually started it after Labor Day. And, and from the time that school started until Labor Day, they actually had an they actually had an adjustment period for students and really developed out some, some slides and through their developmental design or other times, really took the time to sit down with the students in the classes and explain to them why they're going after this initiative, division-wide as a pilot, so that the kids understood. It's not just saying put your cellphone away. They were telling them why it's important to have that cellphone away and be present in your classes during the day. So the initiative is actually during the school day, so it's from nine to 4:05. So the students can still bring their, their, their cellphones. They, they can use them on the bus before school, on the bus after school. And there's some other exclusions we'll talk about that we allow them to use their cellphone for as well. But once that tardy bell rings until the end of the day at 4:05, the kids are expected to have those cellphones away, hence Away for the Day. Naturally, with any initiative that you do, there's going to be either some pushback or some, some people that, the students that have some different opinions, oh, I'm having no cellphones out. Our, our principals were very proactive and wanted this not to be punitive in any way, shape or form as far as suspensions for students. So again, they were really proactive upfront, advertising this to families, doing lessons with the students. And, and really, it's coming down to when a staff member or a student, for the most part, says, hey, put your cellphone away. If they see it, they are very compliant. Each school has had three to five incidents max of students who were repeat offenders. And for those cases, all they did is ask the kids to, to come in, sit down with them, have a conversation, try to build a relationship with a student, helping them understand why they need to have those cellphones put away. And they've called the families and the families have been extremely supportive. So again, when you look at, you know, 75% way through the school year, only having three to five multiple incidents among kids, that's really, really successful. So we talked earlier about the, the, the practices and procedures for during the day. But we allow the kids to bring to school, the phones to schools, we talked about. But the phones are allowed to be used for any after-school events. There's, our, our kids stay after school for just a plethora of reasons. And so we don't want to minimize the safety needs or the need to have those phones after school. So for wherever they are, they can have those phones. And also, we had a conversation about field trips. And we all felt it was really important to actually allow the students to have their cellphones or devices on field trips for, for multiple reasons. One, it's just a great way to be able to document your trip or your experience, taking pictures, being able to take notes on your phone. And additionally, gosh forbid, that the student turns the wrong corner or gets lost in a, in a store or location that they are, they have quick, easy access if they have their phone to be able to get ahold of somebody and be safe. So what our principals have done though is spent some time before field trips and the teachers have, have had conversations with kids about what's the proper phone etiquette for this trip we're going on? When would it be appropriate to pull it out or not pull it out and why? I talked earlier about, when we talked about some of the whys, we're asking students to put it away. We, we asked our teachers about halfway through the year, four big questions we really wanted to collect some data about. And we used a Likert scale that you can see up here. It goes from agree to disagree. And here are the four questions. 92% of our teachers, this survey went just to teachers, 92% of our teachers felt like distractions in my classroom had been minimized. They either agreed or somewhat disagreed with, or somewhat agreed with that. Again, 92% of our, our teachers felt like students are better able to focus in classrooms. 78% of our teachers taking the survey agreed or somewhat agreed that there seems to be fewer instances of cyberbullying. And 86% of our teachers felt like student interactions with each other in the classroom is, is happening more because the cellphones are put away. So again, that's, that's feedback we got from our teachers halfway through the year, which makes us feel like in their eyes, they're seeing some big improvements with the, the practice. So what are our next steps? Well, as we did a survey with the teachers, we would like to get a survey out to our students and families once we end the school year here and, and see what they think about how the Away for the Day practice is going in our middle schools. We are, are, we've been talking and meeting regularly as a middle school group and we're considering revisions of some language for next year. We're waiting until we get some feedback from the families and students as well. But smartwatches and Bluetooth, other Bluetooth devices are, are starting to become a distractions in place of cellphones. So we might expand the, the pilot to include those smartwatches and Bluetooths as well. So we'll do all that at the end of this year and, and, and relook at our language as we implement it again for next year. So actually, all of our principals are with us today and they're going to start out. We'll start out with Jim Asher, but we're going to introduce themselves and share one highlight or comment from each of their schools.
Hello, good evening, School Board members. I'm Jim Asher, the principal at Burley. And I'm just going to add a little information about when we rolled this out, the Away for the Day at the start of the school year, which now seems like a lifetime ago. But at that time, we did hear a great deal of support from parents. But we also did hear from some who took issue with the program. But in speaking with those parents, it was really a misunderstanding because they, some thought that phones were banned from the school. And they were a little worried about, you know, their student, for security reasons, making sure they had the school, uh, phone at the end of the day. So once we talked that through and they realized that it wasn't that the phone had to be, was banned, that they could bring it and the phone just had to be off and away, then that really worked out everything, the misunderstanding was cleared up. And really, we, I, I think we just about had, if not, you know, total support of the program.
Good evening. I'm Megan Wood from Sutherland. And I was, would just like to reiterate what Jim was saying in terms of parent support at the beginning of the year at, at our open house. And, and back to school night, I got a lot of comments from parents after my presentation about how much they appreciated the, the Away for the Day. And I got emails from parents. And so I've received a lot of feedback from parents that were really positive about how thoughtful we were about the cellphone usage in the school and how much they really appreciated what we were doing.
One thing that struck me very early on was my first year to my fourth year and how much it seemed as if kids were more reliant on their phones and how things like lunch and lunch recess and, and recess, it was more of a fight to get them off their phones to interact with each other. And so this past year, through Away for the Day, I got a lot of comments from teachers and you saw 86% of teachers said that they felt their classroom interactions improved amongst peers. I will say that at lunch and at recess, I've gotten a lot of feedback from teachers and parents speaking on behalf of their student, saying that instead of 10 kids sitting at a lunch table and half of them being on their phone to check Instagram or Snapchat or whatever, they're now having improved communications and interactions with each other. And then, like I said, we have a, we have lunch recess. And so instead of kids staying inside during lunch to be on their phones or continue whatever they were doing, they're now getting outside and having a better outdoor experience. So all in all, just that unstructured time where kids don't just reach for their phone because now they can't, they are now improving their interactions with each other. And I feel like the mood has dramatically increased. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Good evening, School Board and everyone else. I just wanted to add that we had a culture of using phones in proliferation at, at Walton prior to this. And some for good and some for not so good, obviously, as a distraction. So teachers were begging for this, but one of the things that happened when we implemented it, they were very thankful, but they also were concerned because there were times when kids could use their phones for educational purposes. So we did develop some ways that, some protocols for making sure they did that thoughtfully. For example, yearbook class, students would use their phones to take pictures of various things around the building. It was just sometimes a lot easier to use their phone than the yearbook cameras. Or for things like Google expeditions, having student phones adds to the ability to have more expeditions happening in a classroom. So we developed protocols where there were press passes and those kinds of things so that students could continue to use those phones, use their phones and do it thoughtfully. And that also included things like field trips. We certainly want to, don't want to send kids to DC who've never been there before and not give them the opportunity to take pictures and, and bring back memories. So all in all, we've seen a lot of good come out of this in terms of less distractions, while also balancing that with what we know are some good educational reasons to have cellphones.
Thank you, Josh.
All right. Good evening, School Board members and everyone else. I'm Ashby Johnson, I'm the principal over at Jewett. I just wanted to thank you all again for supporting us and allowing us to do this this year, the Away for the Day. We at Jewett have seen a, a significant decrease in the amount of issues or conflict that, that are brought to our attention that happened or previously happened during the school day as a direct result of social media or texting or just some sort of cellphone-related issue. We've seen a significant, significant drop in, in that this year, just in terms of the things that we have to de, deal with or mediate that come along with just the middle school age and, and sort of the social drama that comes with it. So by taking the cellphone away, it's really helped us and our kids to be able to stay focused on the learning as opposed to the social aspect during the school day. So we at Jewett, and I know the other middle schools as well, have just seen, I've been very grateful that, that the cellphones are, are put away and, and we don't have to worry about the distraction that comes along with them. So I appreciate that and thank you guys again so much.
Any question?
One, Chad Ratliff, coming from any public charter school. I'm just, I just wanted to, to say that we saw exactly the same results as you've heard from the comprehensive school principals overwhelmingly positive from teachers, students and parents. It has been just a huge change for the better for, for us. And to add a, even a couple of other dimensions to it and a couple of other perspectives, as a parent of a seventh grader myself, I actually saw a little bit of the, the peer pressure to even having a phone subside. It was, it was a little less this year than it was last year at here and, and at home. And when thinking about the difference and how, how much less time I spent with the middle school on particularly as Ashby mentioned, that cellphone drama with middle school students compared to last year, I also having a high school in the same building, it was also a noticeable difference in, in how much time in the day that we would be spending not talking to middle school students about cellphone usage, the drama or the inappropriate times. But, but continuing to talk about those things with, with high school students. So it was kind of an interesting thing for me to see both of those things in the same building. But in sum, I just wanted to, to thank the, the board on behalf of all the principals in the, in the central office for, for letting us get together and put this, uh, put this together and give it a try and think it was very successful. Thank you.
Just in closing, before we take a couple of questions from you guys is, that think this, I, I honestly, I mean publicly, I think I've said I had a lot of concern about this initiative when we piloted this at the beginning and it just, it might cause a lot of problems. And, and, and I told at least one of the principals that, that I was concerned. And the principals did a wonderful job of working together, of communicating to all of their stakeholders, their, their teachers, their students, their families, the, the why behind why they wanted to have these cellphones put away. And, and it's, it's been a very wonderful, very pleasant experience this year so far with our students and our staff. So if you guys have any questions, I know they're all available to, to help answer any specific questions you might have.
Any questions from the School Board?
Jay, is there any particular reason to limit it to middle school?
No, so we, no, the pilot this year was the middle school principals coming to me and Debbie and asking, hey, is this something that we can do? And so we wanted, you know, we met with them and strategically went through the process of developing everything we shared with you. About a month ago or so, we, we have shared the results with the high school principals to ask them if they were interested in, in piloting this as well. So those conversations have begun at the high school about whether this, whether we would move that way or not.
I have one question, and that is that, where, I guess it's more of a comment, is that after a couple more years, all three of the grades that are sixth graders this year, they'll, they'll all be gone. And the kids who are coming up will just know that when you get to middle school, you can't have your cellphone. And then it's just going to be part of the culture. And, and I think that, that, that's going to be, that'll take a lot of pressure off of everybody because not only will the students know, the teachers obviously will know, but their parents will know as well.
Absolutely.
You could also, I mean, it strikes me that if we were, if we were, my life might be in danger if we said high school kids couldn't have their cellphones with them. I have a 16-year-old. But it might, it, would it be feasible to do it on like a, a, like a day a week? Or maybe, you know, from nine until 11 or something like that? So you're not saying, hey, look, high school kids can't have their cellphones, but give them a break.
Yeah.
Does that make sense at all? Absolutely, Dave. And that's, that's a, that's a great, great comment. And I think you're hitting the nail on the head. We've had a, we've had a, a lot of conversations with the high school, uh, uh, high schools around us, or I have at least, started calling some of my friends that are high school principals. And there's a handful of places that are doing it and they're all doing it a little differently. So that's the conversation we started with principals last week. Is this something you want to do or not? What would it look like? How would we do this without, like following something similar to the middle school folks? Not having this be punitive as far as, you know, discipline and, and what would be that, the, the ying and the yang of when you could use it, when you couldn't use it? So we, we literally just started those conversations before we went out with the COVID-19. So I know we'll continue those conversations with the high school folks as well to see what that looks like at the high school and what we might want to try to pilot, whether it be this upcoming year or next year.
Any other questions? Mr. Thomas, and to all the principals, thank you so much for being with us this evening. I think this is a great program and we hear a lot about new normals. I have a feeling this will be one of our new normals within the system very soon. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Okay, next up is the 2021 Budget Development Update. Ms. Schmidt?
Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Off, Chief Operating Officer. Good evening. I'm going to provide a brief intro as Ms. Kumazawa brings the slide deck up. She's going to provide a brief update on our budget development process for next year. I know we're all anxious to get into the numbers, but tonight, with the exception, I think, of one slide, we're going to talk about process and priorities. Staff is diligently analyzing scenarios and options and planning next week's work session with a lot more detail. As Mr. Alcarro said at the beginning, we're going to be spending a lot of time next couple of weeks and, and there'll be budget updates along the way. But next week's work session will be in-depth on the figures. So before I hand it off, just a quick update on the current fiscal year, fiscal year 20. As you recall, we presented that we are anticipating some revenue decreases in our current year. So in anticipation of those decreases, this, this slide shows the strategies we're employing to manage that reduction. And due to the uncertainty of everything, we are just making all efforts, making all efforts to retain as much fund balance as possible as we close out this year. So these are some of the items going on right now, including evaluating discretionary spending. We have all schools and departments forecasting purchases. We are continuing to compensate all regular employees. But we have frozen hires and current vacancies, continuing to monitor revenues. And again, our goal is to end this year in as conservative manner as possible. So with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Kumazawa to talk about the next fiscal year.
Hi, sorry. I am Maya Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning. Can you hear me? Okay. I'm going to jump right into FY21 and starting on the revenue side. What you see here on the slide are estimated revenue changes for FY21 as they currently stand. These still may change as there is still a lot of uncertainty, but we thought we would update you as best as we could at this point in time. The, the estimates were actually just developed today using the latest information released by the VDOE. The dollar changes you see here are presented in two ways. If you take a look at the first row, you can see the change from what was adopted in your balanced funding request for FY21. You can see the change from what was adopted in your balanced funding request for FY twenty one. We thought that since your funding request represented a needs based budget, it made sense for you to compare where we are now. Which is a fifteen million dollar total decrease from where we were not even two months ago. In the second row, we've shown here the change in revenues when compared to the current year FY twenty adopted budget. We're currently estimating that in order to develop a new balanced budget, we will need to cut our expenditures. By about one point eight million dollars, as you can see in the bottom right, from the current FY twenty year. Keep in mind that we have under projected enrollment for the FY twenty budget. So that means we have to find ways to distribute that one point eight million dollar loss in resources for next year when we're at the same time. Facing an enrollment growth of five hundred students. Even before we had these revenues, revenue updates, we've been scrubbing the budget and working on various scenarios and alternatives. I want to provide you with a little bit more detail about what came out in the governor's budget and what went into our state estimate, which is still subject to change. The governor this week released his revised budget and it mostly represents what I would consider a best case scenario. This is mostly due to the fact that SOQ re-benchmarking was maintained. Which means that basic aid funding and revenues tied to the LCI are enrollment growth and the increasing costs of SOQ funded positions remains mostly intact. There were some reductions made, most notably a portion of. A portion of an increase in base in at risk funding and a compensation supplement as no compensation increases are being recommended. At state and local levels. The largest uncertainty as it relates to state revenue is our portion of state sales tax revenue. Our current estimate assumes sales tax revenue that is sixty percent of the original forecast provided by the state. Again, this is highly preliminary and we continue to analyze. The best estimate for this as the state has indicated that they would not be reforecasting their estimates at this time due to too much uncertainty. Switching gears now. To expenditures and are the development of. Our expenditure side of the budget. Staff is working on a revised budget, building it from the ground up. And in order to do this, we wanted to provide some priorities that we've listed here on the slide for your review and feedback. This is the most important step for you in developing a budget since we will use these as a as guiding principles when making difficult decisions. Their student learning and equity, these priorities have not and will not change as they serve as the foundation of our strategic plan. In any economic circumstance, other priorities listed here are keeping current employees employed. Building in contingencies to build that resilient budget and continuing stakeholder engagement efforts. Finally, I wanted to share our updated budget calendar for the next month. It'll be it'll go by very quickly. We are here today and have shared with you the estimated impacts of the governor's revised budget. Hopefully, beginning tomorrow, we'd like to release a budget survey for about a week to receive the community's input. On high level items like our budget priorities. And then on April twenty third, as Roslyn mentioned, your work session will be focused solely on budget development. And we plan on coming back to you with revenue updates if there are any and more specific expenditure recommendations and scenarios for discussion. After that, we plan on finalizing the budget and coming back to you on May seventh. With a recommended budget for your consideration alongside public comment. Please note that this is a new date that we're proposing on May seventh there. A week later, both the School Board and the Board of Supervisors are scheduled to adopt the FY twenty one budget. Which would meet our deadline by per state code to adopt by May fifteenth. And and then lastly listed here is the June third budget appropriation. And if there are any initial amendments to be made since the May fourteenth date, say we get new information or we find something else. There will be an opportunity to make amendments at that time. So that's it for now. If there are questions you have or if you'd like to discuss anything. Turn that over or pull back if you if there are any other slides you want me to pull back up, I can do that.
I just want to say, I think we jinxed ourselves by having a balanced. We were so pleased with ourselves because we yay, we did the.
Balanced budget?
Yeah.
Yep. Well, there's still a lot of a lot of work to do and 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 Ms. Kumazawa, I appreciate your your taking us through that and Ms. Schmidt. Next week's going to be a busy session and. I understand there's going to be about a twenty or twenty five minute presentation, then the rest of the time is conversation. And so, you know, anything you can send us during the week. You know, in terms of information and ideas and and things that you're thinking about that we can be. You know, chewing on as well and and help us get prepared, I think would be greatly appreciated by everybody. Any other questions, comments?
Just, I mean, our assumptions for the budget are. That we're going to start some sort of. I've heard suggestions from senior staff that we may. If everything was hunky dory, even start school earlier. Do this is all based on the normal start date. Plus minus whether we're in person or not, correct? I mean, we're not.
Well, that's that's as you can tell, we intentionally did not show any expenditure assumptions. So we're just showing the revenue side of it as we mentioned scenarios and options. Those are all things we have to take into account with what our calendar looks like. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we will see you all next week.
If I could just ask one clarify, so that so as we are going to push out a survey and what we we are surveying our communities on those priorities. And so we would just like your feedback on the priorities that she presented, the student learning equity, current employees. Continency and stakeholder engagement. That's what our survey is going to be based around. So if you have any additional feedback on that before we push that out to our community, we'd appreciate it.
And I think in part what you're asking for, Roslyn, and correct me if I'm wrong, is. You're looking for us to give an approval. We don't need to vote for it, but just to be in favor of sending that out.
Yeah, we're just looking for a nod that these priorities you would be in agreement with that these should be guiding our. Recommendations and decisions.
Yes.
Other thoughts, other comments?
Yes.
I just have a factual question. I know we are. Historically, we're in the teacher hiring situation and we're talking about. Well, this school year freezing, but what are we doing at this point with respect to? Hiring new teachers, which is our biggest expense is our staff, of course.
At this point, we've asked all of our principals to hold in the hiring process to give us.
Sounds like Claire somewhere. Yeah.
Yes, I'm here. This is this is Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent. We've asked all of our we've asked all of our principals to hold in the hiring process. We we were at the point where we had made just a handful of external offers of still working through some transfer processes. And we are hopeful that as we come to closer consensus on what we're looking at and the impacts on staffing that we'll be able to to lift that those freezes kind of situation by situation. As we move forward, but for right now, everything is on hold.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board or any concerns about sending out the survey or can we just say, let's do it? Okay, I'm I'm sorry, was there a question?
No, I just said, let's do it.
Okay, I think we've got to go ahead, Roslyn. Let's move forward with it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next up is the Red Hill addition and renovation phase two capital funding requests. Roslyn.
Yes, this is mine as well. I don't have any slides for this. It's a brief update, but before I speak about the Red Hill project specifically, I want to provide a brief. Update on CIP. That that update is that at this point, no major decisions have been made. We're working very closely with local government staff to. Debate the best, most conservative path forward and debating what critical projects should proceed in these uncertain times. So again, no decisions have been made. We're monitoring cash flow and just taking this step by step. But in the short term, we're keeping projects on track to ensure that nothing slips in the event that they do get a green light. So as you know, two of our major FY twenty capital projects are the planned addition onto Red Hill and a planned addition on Scottsville. So both are in monitor phase right now, but we want to make sure that if they get the green light, we're good to go. So this one specifically around Red Hill. The item is for information only. It'll be on your consent agenda next week for action. So this is just considered your first read. And of course, it's also obviously contingent on the project proceeding. So if you recall, when we presented the design for Red Hill, we foreshadowed some potential budget challenges. Nothing due to any scope creep, but just rather the small nature of that project and how it was initially budgeted. So bids were received on Monday. Unfortunately, the project did come in over budget. But the good news is that the Scottsville project bid a couple of weeks ago and was under budget. Pretty significantly. So we are recommending that the the board request money be transferred from the Scottsville project to the Red Hill project. This would take a Board of Supervisor approval. We didn't have the specific amount when the agenda item was posted, but I have it now and it will be a part of the agenda item next week. And the amount we're requesting is nine hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred forty eight, so just about nine hundred twenty thousand. About half of that is the add alternates for that project, including that stage addition, if you recall that and some and some restroom upgrades. So by transferring that full amount, that would allow all additive alternates to be accepted. But again, this is for information only. And so are there questions or comments before this is put on the consent agenda next week?
Both projects will proceed, but it's just that since Scottsville is under and Red Hill is over, two sort of balance each other.
At this point, we don't know if either project will proceed. At this point, we're still in a monitor phase. We just wanted to get these. Actions put in place in case it gets a green light because this will be on your agenda for action next week and then the Board of Supervisors' action for May sixth. So there's a series of meetings that just have this financial action. But again, there's no direction on whether the projects are going to proceed or not at this point. We'll know in the next couple of weeks.
I had a question and perhaps the train's too far down the track, but since we can anticipate or we think that there might be some kind of recession, is there any way to? Rebid or you know, it's kind of since it's a changing time, do we go off of a bid that was put in when we were in a different financial situation and economic situation? Or can we get these projects rebid or is there too much sunk cost already?
So there's a couple of different. Purchasing regulations that allow rebids. So we could look into that. I would say the Scottsville bid was very favorable. So I would not recommend going out on that.
I don't want to rebid that one. I want to rebid the bid though.
The challenge is we are we are so cyclical in our school years and getting work done in the summer, you wouldn't have time to rebid and start the work in the summer. So we do have that option to rebid, but it would delay when the work could start. We wouldn't have time to rebid it, get it under contract and be able to start in the summer.
So how does this work with the uncertainty of whether or not we're going to go forward? When are we going to have clarification on that? I mean, it sounds like it might be delayed anyway.
Correct. So that's we'll know in the next couple of weeks.
And would we still be able to make a decision at that point to rebid? Maybe maybe we don't want to rebid. I just I've heard, you know.
Yeah.
Now there's a completely different economic situation.
Well, so these bids were received on Monday, so it's it is a recent bid. These are contractors who were placing bids right in the middle in this uncertainty. I will say we the the next highest bid was within eleven hundred dollars, which is very, very narrow margin. So that's also an indication of. People being aggressive and also a good set of plans as well. We do have the opportunity to negotiate with the lowest bidder, which we will do as well.
Thank you.
I just want to say that with the transfer from Scottsville to Red Hill, I'm very pleased that we're able to do the all the options that we. That were presented earlier, the stage that was just a much better outcome.
I agree. Other comments? Thank you, Roslyn. Okay, I look forward to seeing that on the consent agenda next week. Okay, does anybody have any other business? Any other board members? Okay, I think that with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Jono.